All right, we'll call the meeting to order, please. Jennifer, if you would mind, a roll call.
Ms. Christian?
Here.
Ms. Bobbinger?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Specter Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Hsu? Ms. Young?
Hey, we have five, so a quorum. First item is the agenda, consent agenda. Before I ask for motion, is there anything on the consent agenda anyone would like to have taken off the consent agenda and put into the regular business?
Yes, I had one question about item 3.7. I can either just ask that question now, or I can do it later.
Sure.
If it's the incorrect secretary of state.
No, actually, that wasn't.
Okay, because we still had Jesse White on there, and we...
He hasn't been here for a while.
No, he hasn't been.
It's been a few months.
Do you want to move it out, or do you want to just ask the question?
Well, it's just a... yeah, it is a question or just a comment, so I think I could do it very quickly.
Okay.
As some of you know, I am a FOIA officer, and as I was reviewing the updated Freedom of Information Act policy, I noticed under 2A, it notes that requesters must use the request form or email the FOIA officer. Again, my understanding is that Section 3C of the FOIA Act says that the public body must accept the request in any format, up to and including oral, maybe if they're willing to do that, but any written format.
Any written format is... yeah, no, you are absolutely 100% correct.
Including, you know, snail mail, or somebody once said to me when I was doing a training, they could use like a piece of a tissue if they want to, as long as it's written down, so that was all.
Let us take this off, and we'll bring it back with the updated wording next month.
All right, so we are removing item 3.7 from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended to remove 3.7?
Still moved.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Janet. We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Bobbinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Specter Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is we have an oath of office, the Mora. We missed you last month.
Oh, yes.
So we need to have you take the oath of office. You have the oath for her, or do I have it? The written oath that she's going to sign.
Oh, Jennifer, I believe, has it? The written oath for Mora?
Okay, I can do it. I mean, if you don't have the written, I was going to have it in front of her. I have it, I just didn't know what she wanted to have in front of her.
Oh, okay.
Okay, you'll be signing the written oath later.
Okay, very good.
You can repeat after me, please. I, Mora Christian.
I, Mora Christian.
Having been elected to the Office of Library Trustee.
Having been elected to the Office of Library Trustee.
In the village of Northbrook.
In the village of Northbrook.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
To solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Library Trustee.
Of the Office of Library Trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll sign it later. Okay, next item on the agenda is public comments. Seeing no public, hearing no public, is there anything? Okay, no public comments. Next item is staff reports.
So we have Amanda Margas, who is our Youth Services Assistant Manager and Chair of the Reading Committee, the Reading Club Committee, here to tell us about summer reading, because it started June 1st.
It started June 1st, and we have had amazing kickoff and go into some more information, but yes, so I'm very excited to be here, always happy to come before the board and share what we've been doing here at the library. So this year's summer reading is Find Your Voice. Some of you at last month's meeting got our kickoff magnets. I do have extras if someone didn't get any, or if they need extra ones, definitely feel free, because these are it. All 500 about plus of our magnets were given out during kickoff week, but it's Find Your Voice, and as you can see in our lovely illustration that Princess, our graphic designer, did, we went with a theme of, you know, not just find your voice in sort of a metaphorical way of, you know, speaking up and advocacy, but also we use sound waves, and some of our imagery includes American Sign Language, you know, find your voice in different languages as a way to connect, and so we went with a lot of color and wave imagery, and so we extended some of that. If you've been up to our second floor, our Youth Services area, lots of bright color, so very excited about the theme. We do have a quick promotional video that Princess also put together that we were able to share with the local schools, and this is also up on our YouTube channel, so.
This summer at the Northbrook Public Library. Everyone, get ready to find your voice. You'll read every day, complete your reading log, and earn prizes. The summer reading program starts June 1st. Sign up, read books, and earn prizes. For more information or to sign up, please visit us at northbrook.info/summer-reading.
So like I said, Princess, our graphic designer, worked on that along with Julianne in our Youth Services Department, did the voiceover for us, so very happy with how that turned out, and like I said, the schools that we weren't able to go into for classroom visits or school visits, we were able to share this with our schools so that they could show it in the classrooms and build up the excitement for summer reading, so that was very helpful. So similar to last year, if you were here last year, I talked, we do have four programs here at the library. We have a program for adults, for teens, for kids, and for babies, and all our programs have the same structure as they did last year, which was very helpful for us in the planning stage, so that we could put all the fun touches on it, like the prizes and the decorations and all of that good stuff. So for the adult program, which I did bring a log for everyone, in case anyone has not signed up for summer reading yet, it's here, ready to go, but pretty straightforward for adults, read four books, get entered into weekly drawings. We've purchased gift cards to local businesses and restaurants that we do a random weekly drawing for if you've just signed up, and we also do have, when you read all four books, I did bring it, I can pass it around, a lovely lunch tote that we're really excited about that has our logo on it, and I can pass that around. Actually, while I'm talking, I can pass it around if people want to see the logs up close. So signup can happen at any of our desks for adult programs, at our reference desk, fiction media, and also can be logged online. We have all the website on there, the website that was on the video. A lot of our patrons do, really went online logging, especially during pandemic years when that was all we really had to offer, but even since then, our online logging numbers have still remained really high, so that's really exciting to see them engage with both in person and online as well. Our team program, again, is very similar to last year's. We got feedback two years ago from our teens that they would appreciate a reading program that focused on tracking minutes. A lot of our teens are involved in a lot of activities, so sports camps, some of them are camp counselors themselves, we have a team volunteer program that runs through the summer, so our teens are very active in our community, so them having the ability to read when it's convenient to their schedule and track those minutes was something that they gave us feedback that they really appreciated, so took that into action, and they track minutes, and at different stages, they'll get different prizes. This year, we have coupons from local businesses that have been generously donated to us. I have a slide layer that I can go through a lot of those, but then, of course, when they finish the program at 10 hours of reading, they get a free book. That's always a big proponent with our programs for teens, for kids and babies, that at the end of it, you should get a book that you get to take home and keep, and that that you get to select as well. So we have a wide variety of books at our summer reading desk that is also up on our second floor, our Youth Services area, for different areas and have different appeal. Some are more popular, some are tied to our award list that we put out, or the school lists that get shared with us. So our team program, we also have grand prizes for our team program. Again, we look to our teen advisory board to give us feedback on what they would like to see, so this year, they're very excited for electronic items, so we have an Apple Watch that they can try and win as one of the grand prizes, and also a gift card to the book bin. Again, we want to support our local businesses, especially the book bin we have such a great relationship with. And for the teens, one thing that was really popular last year that we did bring back again this year is bonus challenges for those teens that find reading 10 hours is no sweat, and they're ready to do more and extend their reading. If they do all five of the bonus challenges, they get a tote bag, which based off of the teens that earned a tote bag last summer really liked it, and they wanted a tote bag again, so we have a slightly different style, still like a green and canvas color that looks very natural. We were also kind of surprised our teen advisory board was like, yes, more tote bags, so we're kind of like, okay.
How are we going to be collector's items someday?
Yes, exactly. So yeah, and then for our youth program, which is the big log that was sent out, this one is always a fun log that we love to design with a graphic designer. This one has a little bit of a game board element to it, another feedback we've gotten from patrons in the past that even though when they have the online option and they really enjoy it, that a lot of our young readers and families also enjoy having this print, something that they can hold, something that their kids can mark, that they can put on the wall, they can put on the fridge, and mark off their days as they're doing it, that there's still a lot of value in that, so I just love our log. I love it every year, but especially this year, the colors and the images are really great, but so for every five days of reading, and for the youth program, we did choose to have tracking days of reading, especially with our younger readers, we want to obviously instill in them a lifelong love of learning, which is one of our library's goals and missions, and we feel that encouraging a daily habit of reading with our young readers and families is a great way to do that. So we suggest 30 minutes a day, but we also understand that every family's different, every child is different, and so if for a family, you know, reading every day looks like an hour or more, that's amazing, that's wonderful, love to hear it, but if it's less than 30 minutes, if it's five minutes a day, 10 minutes a day, that's great as well. We just love to encourage that daily habit of reading. So again, as they go through the different stops, they get coupons to local businesses, they get drawing tickets to try and win one of the grand prize, which I'll talk about a little bit later, and then when they get to 20 days, they also get to pick out a free book, they get to keep forever and always, which again is also very exciting, because we have different bins with the different ages, they flip through them, and always lots of fun. We also heard from our families that they really appreciate, again, 20 days is a huge accomplishment, and we like to celebrate that, and again, that's what we say is our finish, and that's when they get the big prizes, the book, but we also know some of our readers are very excited and enthusiastic readers, so they can keep reading further to try and get more tickets, to try and win more prizes, and have that, again, a way to recognize readers at different levels and different abilities. We also got feedback last year that the kids program did have bonus challenges, people loved them and participated, but that there were more, and that they'd be harder, so we took some of that feedback into, but we did expand the bonus challenges for kids. We now have eight, and they too, if they do all eight of them, get a special prize, and this year it's a water bottle, that's kind of a sport water bottle with a handle, and again, has our logo on it, they look amazing. Anna Amon, the business office, worked really closely with us with all of our imprinted items, so we're super grateful, excited about that, and again, also our T-shirts that I know were previewed last month, so all exciting as well. And our last program, our baby program, again, this is one personally proud of and love to promote, so this program we really target towards our youngest readers, so under two, but we're very flexible and know that different families are in different places, so we'll let any young person sign up for it, but rather than tracking minutes or days of reading, we have early literacy activities that are based on really good daily skills to work with baby to get ready to read, so singing with baby, blowing bubbles with baby, counting the number of cars that pass, all of these things help build literacy skills. So we try to make this baby program really flexible, and so that fits in with the parents' and babies' lives, because we want to make this as seamless as possible, and we also have prizes that are a little bit more appropriate. A one-year-old isn't as excited for a coupon to a local business as a seven-year-old will be, so for their halfway prize, they have a shaker egg, and then for the final prize, again, they get to pick out a book, which is always exciting as well. So kickoff week happened, it was June 1st through 7th. We had amazing turnout, we had a desk that was here in the lobby during certain times that we had some key programs going on that we knew it was going to be busy as well, so we wanted to, you know, catch in on that excitement and have the extra foot traffic. I was personally on the signup desk on June 1st, and I could tell the minute Hickory Point got off the school. They had a very swarm. Because all of a sudden, a lot of families were coming in, everyone's like, Hickory Point, Hickory Point, and that trend followed the next couple of days, every single school that got off, which was really exciting for me to know that Julianne Madell, our school services librarian, and she had partners with Youth Services, that those kids really listened to those presentations and were very excited to come to the library to sign up. So we had a pop-up craft station along with the table, we gave out the magnets, and again, I think these are the last of the 500. If there are more floating around, they're hiding from me, I will find them, but we also had really great turnout for our programs. An Encanto sing-along that was in the auditorium was very well attended, Violins of Hope had display again here, also had a lot of really great participation for that, so, you know, tying our signup table with those programs that the library was already doing was a really great way to do that, and we also had a passive program, our Scavenger Hunt, that Linda Varing and Kelly Kay and our marketing department put together, and we had 354 entries, the winners were announced, well, were notified this week, so we bought $300 gift cards, again, to local businesses, Sunset Book Bin, those winners have been very excited and have snapped up their prizes as well, but I did hear some feedback from especially circulation staff, just how fun it was to see the families with their Scavenger Hunt, like go and find the clues and ask like, oh, well, where is this, and go to areas of the library they have not been in before, so that was a huge success and something, talking with Linda this week, we were kind of doing a brief, deep brief, we're very excited, like, we'll keep this in mind for next year, how well, how well it was and how exciting it was. So finally, some quick numbers. We did do, like I said, school visits, we went to five different schools and saw over almost 1,600 students, and that is definitely reflective, if you look below with our signup numbers. You know, I don't know that they have exceeded pre-pandemic numbers, but from stats, weekly stats I could find from 2018, they're pretty close, maybe off by 100 or so, so very happy with the signup numbers and the rate of signups. Obviously, they've trailed off a little bit, not as, you know, high as they were, but we are still seeing definitely 100-plus signups across all four programs since we've launched, so we're definitely in for a very exciting summer, looking forward to that. And yeah, so this slide with our community partners, so I may have mentioned some incentives that we're giving out, so Northbrook Park District and the YMCA have donated coupons for the team program and the youth program, along with Culvers, Kane County Cougars, I Level Tutoring here in Northbrook, George Garner Recylery has once again generously donated a bike that is part of our grand prize for their youth program. Love working with George, I give him a call every year and get to chat with him, and they're always excited and happy to donate it and be part of this, really a tradition here at the library, so that's always fun. The YMCA also did donate, along with those, their splash passes for the different stops, they donated a three-month family membership, that is another grand prize they're giving out, so very happy for that. Northbrook Civic Foundation is again donating wristbands for All You Can Ride for three of the days for Northbrook Days, another Northbrook institution we're excited to promote and give out to the community as well, and then Bach to Rock, which is a music school here in Northbrook, they have been partnering with us with some programs, Instrument Petting Zoo last month, we're going to be partnering with them in the future, but they are also donating a music party for our youth program that would include learning new instruments and actually recording some music as part of that, so some very generous community partners that we're always excited to work with and happy to have a part and promote as well. That is my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Barbara?
I just think your enthusiasm and your genuine enjoyment and passion for it is contagious, so thank you for sharing it all, and I signed up right away, and appreciate all of your efforts and you staff's efforts, sounds great.
Thank you very much, and you know, as Kate mentioned, I'm head of the reading committee, and which includes members from pretty much all the departments here at the library, so it is, it is a library-wide effort, summer reading every year. It's a big effort, it takes a lot of work, but as you can see with signup numbers, and even at our signup desks, talking with families, especially families maybe we haven't seen in the last couple of years that are coming back from pandemic times, and I was joking right before this, I had signed up a young person that I used to have when they were younger in some of my programs, and they were like, I'm going to be a senior, and I was in shock. So that's exciting for us, too, just to have, you know, the extra, people coming in does create extra work, but it is always exciting for us to reconnect with those relationships and, and again, really support one of the core things that we do here at the library, and that's a lifelong enjoyment of reading, so thank you.
One more?
I was able to attend the, one of your programs at Greenbrier, and it was wonderful, and it was so fun to hear the buzz from all the students coming out of there, so we're very motivated.
My favorite comment from signup week, when I was working at the pop-up signup table, was a mom came in looking like, she's like, he wouldn't even let us go eat lunch, we had to come here first, and I'm like, you just made my day, like, that's it, we're done. It was just great.
Yes, the magnet was quite the hyped item of the summer, so if you have one, you have an exclusive item.
Yeah.
Soundproof picture.
Thanks for doing such a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so I have a couple other things that I just wanted to touch on from my report. We have had our kickoff call with Lily Zhang and Sarah Skodius, who works in tech services, and Michelle Mostolsky, who works in maker services, and I are going to be working with Lily, Jamie Hsu, although Jamie was on vacation, is also, and so we are working on getting the timeline set and getting the information ready to go, so I don't have a ton of updating, but just wanted to let you know that we have started that, and so hopefully by next month, we should have some initial information that we can hopefully share about what the rest of the process is going to look like. I also wanted to mention, I am going to be out for some minor surgery in August, so I'm going to be out for like a week, nothing to be concerned about, but I wanted to just let the board know now, and I'll also be taking some vacation time right before the surgery as well. I also, I think, well, I don't know if everyone has heard about this, but I know I've mentioned that the law prohibiting book banning in the state had been passed, and now Pritzker has officially signed it, and so we are the first state in the United States to officially ban book banning, which is really wonderful, because as an institution that supports intellectual freedom, this is obviously so incredibly important, we don't want to censor, we want people to be able to access any information. Now, people can still come in and talk about things that they don't like, we're welcome, they're welcome to, but what they can't do is dictate what other people get to read and enjoy, so this is really a huge win, it's a pretty exciting, all the libraries, as I'm sure you guys can imagine, are pretty excited about this and really feel that this sets Illinois apart. I mean, we already knew we had really fantastic libraries, but this just gives us that extra oomph and exciting, yeah, exciting, so.
I had finished reading Alan Grant's Ban This Book on, so it was signed on Wednesday, or no, or Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday.
The day before it was signed, we had finished listening to that book on tape, and so I was able to tell her about it, she watched the coverage of it, and I was like, so Illinois is the first state to ban this, and she's like, what?
Right, that's right, like, it's really kind of momentous, so that, yeah, that's awesome. Yeah. And we also have in your blue folders, we've gotten a couple of letters from some of the students in District 28 saying like, hey, books shouldn't be banned, and, you know, we think it's important that, you know, kids have access to different things. There was one that was really great, where it's like, even if it's hard, even if it's hard stuff, it's important that we learn about things that are hard, and we can talk to our parents about them, and, you know, we have a number of educators in the room, and so I'm sure you guys agree with that, so I wrote a letter back thanking them for their commitment to intellectual freedom, and we agree that censorship is never the answer, so that was really, those were wonderful letters to hear, so. I wanted to also just mention a couple of things unrelated to book banning, and one is that I have been working, we had the presentation with Ann-Kate Emery that I mentioned in the director's report, she came and did a presentation about how to tell your library story with data, and so I've been working on updating kind of how we do the stats, so what you saw in your packet this month was the first attempt at things, it will be, continue to be tweaked, and I'm going to, I'm not going to ask you for feedback this month, but in like another month or two, once I feel like I've actually gotten it hammered out, I'm going to see if there are things we can do. The goal is to give you guys not just the numbers, but the story behind the numbers, so that you can know kind of how we're doing, and so. And then the last thing I wanted to just mention is all of the staff anniversaries that we celebrated on Staff Development Day last month, and I just like to read out the staff names, because it's almost 125 years of service, and that is amazing. I mean, so, so it's just really, yeah, and it gives me a chance to make Anna and Lori perhaps a little bit embarrassed, because we'll be reading their name. So we have five staff that are celebrating 10 years, Barb Chakorsky in Circulation, Summer Kasugay in Youth Services, Sue Schmidt in Circulation, Harvey Huey in Adult Services, and Tracy Gossage in Adult Services. I don't know if everyone here knows this, but Anna and Lori both started working within a couple months of each other, and so they are both celebrating their 15-year anniversary. Yes, if their work anniversary was a teenager, it would be getting its driver's permit, so I don't know, stay off the roads, or maybe it'll be good. And then we have a couple staff that are celebrating even more illustrious anniversaries. With 20 years, we have Said Jaffrey, who is one of our security monitors, and it works in administration, and then 25 years, so not only able to drive, but also able to vote, Amy Norton, who is one of our great librarians in Adult Services. So all told, 125 years serving the community of Northbrook is pretty impressive, and I just want to commend them and make sure the board is aware that we have these amazing staff that are working here, and how much they've, how much time they've given to the community, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm happy to answer any other questions from my report, if anyone has any.
Any questions? Forgot to mention one thing.
What did I forget?
What's, you told me next week.
ALA.
ALA.
Oh, sorry, you're right, I didn't write it, I didn't write it on my sheet, so then it doesn't exist unless it's on my sheet. Yeah, the American Library Association National Conference is next week in Chicago. There's a number of staff attending, we have a number of our staff who are in libraries who are attending, and a number of new staff that this will be their first conference, so we're very excited to be able to send them, it's a great opportunity to not only, you know, meet with vendors and go to workshops, but to connect with people across the country and really build those networks, because while all of us do the same work, we're all, we all do it a little bit differently, so it's great to hear from others what they are, what they are doing, and I know I had mentioned this in previous board meetings, there are still exhibit passes, so if any board members at the last minute are like, I desperately want to go to McCormick Place and go to the ALA exhibits, just let Anna or I know, we can still get you an exhibits pass to attend, it starts Friday afternoon and goes through Tuesday, so if you're looking for something to do next weekend and you'd like to, let us know, and I'm happy to take you around, it's a lot of fun and a great way to get up on all of the new books coming out, which is good, but also dangerous.
So anyone who hasn't been, I think it's pretty much everyone around the room, board members, I mean, so the exhibit floor is... So, the exhibit floor is, every major publisher's on the floor, they're there with all the books that are coming out in the next year, the big ones, really. So, there's samples that they're handing out, so free books if you're interested. They have a number of authors that are speaking and then also signing books. So, during the day, there are different opportunities to book sign by the authors. There are, was it, there's presentation areas on the exhibit floor.
Yeah, they have like stages for different things.
Yeah, so there's things going on around, it's not just walking around and seeing machinery, but there's also all the machinery, the furniture vendors, if you're interested in seeing any of that or learning about any of that, or kind of seeing what's out there, it's a good opportunity just to walk the floor and get a visual idea of what the different things are. Technology vendors, small publishers, and different organizations that support libraries with different services. You said it's just the floor and not any of the sessions?
Oh, I mean, we can still sign you up for sessions, too, if you would like.
There are also a number of, throughout the weekend, speaker series, you know, in the main auditorium, there's different sessions where you can go and sit and learn about things that are important in the library world. They have specific sessions for trustees, if there's something you're interested in, you can look and see. There aren't quite as many of those as the rest of them, it's mostly for library staff and administration. But even those, if you go and you sit in, it's interesting, I mean, they have things, typically on sessions on things like censorship, book banning, trends that are going on, talk about architecture, you know, in terms of library. Anything you can think of that's connected with what we hear about over the course of a few years, it's likely to have a session that addresses it. It's worth while experience while it's in Chicago, because it's easy to get to, you don't have to go the whole weekend, you know, it's low cost, and it's just a good opportunity to go and see things and kind of get an idea, okay, you know, we're sitting and talking about different issues that come up through the course of the term, you've got some background maybe that you look back to and say, "Okay, I remember seeing something at ALA that may be relevant."
Is it always in Chicago?
No, but ALA is headquartered here, so it alternates.
It's about every three or four years it's in Chicago.
Yeah, so, yeah, and sometimes it's like a couple of years in a row, and then it's elsewhere, so I think it's when they can't get a good deal in other states. But, but yes, it is wonderful. And every fall, we do have the Illinois Library Association Annual Conference as well. Obviously, that exhibit hall is not nearly the size of this, but that also has a lot of great sessions, and they have a full day dedicated just to trustees, and it's a great way to connect with trustees from area libraries here, which is always really nice as well. So, just let us know.
Great idea, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is the board member reports. Is there anything a board member would like to report? Seeing and hearing none, move on to the unfinished business. First item on the unfinished business is a discussion of the strategic plan consultant interviews from our special meeting a couple of weeks ago. So, Kate, do you have a presentation?
No, but Jamie had sent me some comments that, since she wasn't able to be here, so I'm just pulling them up so that I can share them.
Okay.
Is that, no, so, all of them supposed to send to you electronically?
Okay.
That is the COVID policy that was rescinded in May.
Okay, got it.
So, I'll go ahead, sorry, I think that maybe what we want to do is spend a few minutes just talking about general impressions, we have to go around and everyone say what their general impressions were with the three consultants that we heard from, positive, negative, and then from there we can go, and Kate, you'll represent Jamie then. We can go and just kind of, if there's a, generally idea of where we are, see if there's a motion, otherwise we can kind of get into a process of determining which of the consultants we would like to hire. I'll start with the Ivy Group. I thought it was an interesting presentation, I think they did a fairly good job, I didn't think, relative to some of the others, it was as specific, as specific to our circumstances as some of the others. They are the most expensive of the three, and they're also, I think, the furthest from Northbrook. I thought they had a good process, but, you know, at the end of the day, it started out strong, I mean, I thought they had a good presentation, but at the end of the day, I thought that of the three, they were probably, on my list, the third.
I would agree with that, I felt like their presentation started out strong, but overall ended up being the weakest of the three in terms of what we learned from them. They didn't really identify much knowledge about Northbrook Library or how they would learn about the culture. I think the other two were stronger, and both represented their experience well and their ability to learn about our community. I think in the reference checks, what stood out to me was Fast Forward Libraries, their references talked specifically about working with an EDI consultant and bringing that forward, and I don't think that was necessarily missing from Essentium, but it was like a key detail in one of those reference checks for Amanda and Fast Forward.
I would say that I also agree that there didn't seem to be much of a response to sort of, to who we are and sort of how they would address that question of who we were. Would say that I wasn't as, I would put them closer with the first and the second, sort of more tied, but given.
I wasn't there for the Ivy Group presentation, but I had already noticed on reading their proposal and that they were very, you know, they were certainly the most expensive, and I didn't feel that the breakout of what we would be paying for gave me a lot of information. I can't speak to the presentation, but the other two groups, I thought, both of them, I thought, were very good. What I did like about Fast Forward was that they did have this dedicated person working on EDI issues.
No, it's obvious, we'll come back, I just want to focus on each one.
Oh, sorry.
Barbara?
I was impressed with the Ivy Group's emphasis on the data and research, and I'm always concerned that you have hard information with which to work. I thought it was interesting, because our response to having a minority staff member be included at the last minute from their presentation was interpreted as they were doing it just for appearances. And I perceived it differently as them showing us that they, in fact, walk the block, they hire minority people, and that, that would give us a perspective to start with, with that young woman involved. I think that there were stronger presentations, people I would be more comfortable with, but I did like many of their features.
And the next one was Essentium. I know it's, you know, a great presentation, I thought they addressed all of our questions within their presentation, other ones that Kate gave them ahead of time and asked them to address. I thought the answers were fairly good answers, they were specific to us, and I thought that they would, you know, if we decided to pick one, would do a good job, but it's just my general feeling from the presentation and that they were, you know, paying attention to certain of the issues that we were asking them to consider. So, I was, you know, pretty happy with them.
I thought they were well-prepared, I thought the presentation was good. I had some concerns with their interpretation of culture and cultural assimilation and the imagery used in their presentation, presentation, excuse me. I think they talked about it well, but was a little confused by the image they chose for that slide.
The one with the hands?
Yes. I also didn't get a sense of what libraries they've worked with that would be comparable to ours, they talked about Zion Benton and Rockford, which are great libraries, but not quite the same kind of community, but they did talk about learning about our community. So, I think overall, they would be a good fit if we move forward with them.
I was not as impressed with their sort of, I didn't feel a connection with them the way I did with the other two groups possibly, and the images, they talked about cultural assimilation and the language, the term assimilation sort of really kind of turned me off, and I thought their attempt to sort of connect with Northbrook was pretty minimal, and I'm not sure it even really, it struck me as why bring it up, that I think it was, what it was, it was the, it seemed a little tenuous and not, there was something about the presentation that didn't strike me as very genuine, I guess, or there didn't have a lot of depth to it.
So, I sort of walked in on the middle of this one. I thought the presentation was a good one, actually, and particularly in comparing it with the next one, I thought it made more of an effort to speak directly to our library, and it was a little less cookie cutter. Honestly, I, you know, but they, I felt very comfortable with them, what they could offer us.
I liked them very much, I liked the marketing expertise, when we talked about reaching into the community and getting focus groups, and I thought her ideas were substantial. I liked when she said, "Don't shy away from dissension," when the question was asked, "How do you deal with that?" And they focused on outcomes and measures with a baseline target. I think that Jamie had excellent library experience, she had a diverse, she's coming with a library background. I liked them.
Can I share what?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm going to just read exactly what Jamie put. She said, "I'm good with Essentium, if that's what most other board members want, I feel they're strong with strategies, but less so with library expertise."
Does she have anything that you want to add on Ivy Group?
She would not vote for Ivy.
Okay.
Do you want me to just, I'll also...
You can do Fast Forward, too.
I'll just do Fast Forward. So, my first choice is Fast Forward, and second is Essentium. I think Fast Forward Libraries has more experience slash expertise working with libraries. Also, personally, I had really good feelings about Amanda. That was it.
Yeah, I think that's a good segue to talk about Fast Forward. So, at first I was kind of a little, you know, shocked that Amanda wasn't ready for us on, you know, that Thursday, but then once Kate got a hold of her and she said, "Okay, well, present," and even though she didn't have her full staff and she wasn't exactly, you know, in the mode of ready to present, I thought she did a very good job with presenting. I was impressed that a week ahead of time of what she thought was the date, she actually had the slide deck ready to go and, you know, complete and could sit and go through it and, you know, give us good detailed explanations. Thought she did a good job answering the questions, she did, through her presentation, addressed most of the questions. She seemed to have very good connection with Kate in terms of their knowledge of each other and, you know, the knowledge of libraries in general and the depth of her experience. She's not local to Chicago, but she's local to Illinois, so it didn't seem like there was going to be any issues with her, you know, when Tiny was, you know, to come up here and was in person. To talk about the data and the lived experience, I liked her learn, dream, do, you know, kind of comments. Talked about the cultural librarian, looking at also, and she was very open to working with Lilly Zhang. Putting my other comments down. I mean, those were most of my comments, so Stacy?
I was impressed at how well she did for not having her staff and not being fully prepared. I think her understanding of our community was different than the other consultants. I also appreciated that she has a DEI specialist who she works with, and obviously he wasn't on the call, but I think that is important as we think about our partnership with Lilly moving forward. And she mentioned not just giving Martin the final product, but having him weigh in along the way, reviewing documents and reviewing questions and things like that. I liked her implementation process, including the guide and the framework for evaluating the plan. I didn't have any concerns about Amanda or Fast Forward.
Amanda, sorry.
I'm done.
Amanda and Fast Forward would be my first choice, unless there was anything that we learned after about the sort of scheduling, I was very impressed with the fact that she was able to do it so thoroughly, and I just felt that there were, that I didn't have would be, so I would be, it would be my first choice.
Most of my comments have already been, I would just echo the comments of Jay and Stacy and Mara. I also liked the learn, dream, do. I did, I was impressed that, given that she'd gotten the night wrong, she had the presentation ready to go and could do it, I thought that was fairly exceptional. And I like, I did like that they were local in Illinois, and that would make things, some things a little easier, and a lot of experience with libraries.
I think a lot of response is to her personally, that she was able to step up at the last minute and do a very credible job with the presentation. My concern is she didn't have it on her calendar, and I don't care how wonderfully she stepped up and did it, if you're a professional, you make sure she contacted you or she double-checked. So, yes, she gets points from me for stepping up and handling it with her hair and all her stuff that she was talking about. I found her more appealing than what she had to offer. I guess that's what I have to say. I didn't get a real sense of confidence, starting with the fact that she didn't remember the meeting, but she would be my second choice.
I already shared Jamie's stuff, yeah, that.
Okay, so, I mean, the next thing I think is just to get us kind of consensus, or see where we stand, go around and ask them whether to say their first choice, not say their second and third, but just their first. I really was leaning heavily after the meeting towards Essentium, so I think that would be my first choice.
Fast Forward.
Fast Forward.
Fast Forward.
Essentium.
Right, so, that was four for Fast Forward and two for Essentium, including Jamie.
Oh, yeah, Jamie had said Fast Forward, yep.
Including her. So, I mean, it's pretty much that's the consensus, I would say, not knowing what Abby or wouldn't, don't think we've had any feedback from Abby?
No, Abby did not feel she could weigh in, given that she didn't, you know, get to see, yeah, yeah, so...
I would then ask if there's a motion to hire Fast Forward as our strategic planning consultant for...
$29,000.
$29,400.
It's moved, seconded.
Thank you, Stacy, we have a call, please.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Lobinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Richev?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, so we will hire Fast Forward.
Okay, really quickly, before we move on to the next agenda item, so I'll be reaching out to start setting things up. One of the things that we'll be looking for, and once I, you know, once we've signed the contract and are good and started, is to have board member representation on the committee that will work with Amanda, so I'm just putting it out there. Last time we had two board members, we can certainly have two, we can have three, it's entirely up to who would like to. It obviously would be, you know, having some various meetings and things, but I think it's really helpful as part of this process to have board representation on it, since the board is the one that sets the strategic direction, you know, the staff are able to weigh in on the day-to-day stuff, but having that melding of the two is really important. So, I'm just planting the seed.
Next item is new business, and the Illinois Public Library in Report, so Kelly, I have here that you are going to present.
Yeah.
On our fiscal year '23 Iplor Report.
Okay, thanks. So, Jay already stole the first line of the presentation, it is the Illinois Library, Public Library Annual Report, and this is actually based on a fiscal year, which is the same way that... on a fiscal year, which is the same way that we report statistics month to month to the board. But we also submit an annual report to the Illinois State Library. They use that to submit the data to the Public Library Survey, which is PLS. We love acronyms in libraries. And that is administered through the Institute of Museum and Library Services, or IMLS. So the report itself is a by-the-numbers look at the library from the facility size to the personnel data, budget information, collection, usage, programs, and services. The data that we submit is published by the Illinois State Government website and it's included in the PLS National Survey annually. The PLS survey is a national level analysis from all 50 states, District of Columbia, and outlying territories. So it does give us a little bit of data that we can look comparatively across the state as well as across the nation at how we're doing statistically. We'd like it to be a little bit easier to look at, but that data is there and we can access that, which is nice. So how the data is used by the state and IMLS, it provides information and trend data. Again, that's something that then is provided to all Illinois libraries. We can look at how we compare against other libraries within the state. It's occasionally used as part of IMLS grant opportunities, as well as the Library Journal Star Library Initiative, which we're generally a five-star library, which is the top rating. So the data that we're reporting on the IPLAR is contributing to that star rating. So where do the numbers come from? It's not apples to apples with the monthly statistics that we're reporting, but a lot of what we're seeing on a month-to-month basis and presenting to the board are what are going into our annual accounts. There's also staff that aggregate data that we collect throughout the year to produce the numbers for the IPLAR report. So all of our departments and many staff members are responsible for reporting on portions of this data and the report is a result of all that work. So it's something we usually start in April and finish by submitting by the end of June. So just kind of some notable stats and trends from this year's IPLAR. The first is our meeting room. So our meeting room bookings for our public meeting rooms, which includes this room, Pollock, Civic, and the interactive classroom, really took a dive during COVID. For a large part of it, we couldn't have the meeting rooms open. But even when we reopened, as you see from 2022, they were still not heavily used. And so what we're seeing this year is we are coming up to pre-COVID levels again with meeting room bookings, which is great. And then the really exciting room booking is our study rooms. So you may recall back in 2019, we only had five study rooms, but even then they were heavily used. And then, of course, we did our huge study room project. We built new study rooms. We are now up to 18 study rooms. And we had over 10,000 users last year for our study room. And this is something that we see throughout the day. It's not just folks coming in after school or after work to meet in groups and study. Those rooms are booked all day, every day. They're used by job seekers. They're used by remote workers who come in to do work outside of their home. Community groups that have smaller numbers are using them. There's several moms groups that I know of that are here in the mornings that meet. So they're getting used for a lot of different purposes. And so that, that project has really borne a lot of fruit, which is great. Another thing which you might remember, earlier this year, we did a lot with library card accessibility. And because Illinois legislation changed, we were able to make a change to our own library card policy. And the board voted to allow non-residents under 18 to get a card free of charge, regardless of whether they lived in an area that was paying taxes into the library. And so last year, this Cards for Kids Act was available, but it required a lot of paperwork. People had to prove that they were eligible and that they had income below a certain level. With the legislation change, we were able to take all of that away. So we went from only having four users for the Cards for Kids program to 174. And that is going to expand even more because we are working with the schools to do library card registration as part of the registration process. So we've already had close to 1,000 kids register for cards through the school registration process this spring, which is wonderful. And a lot of those are Northbrook taxpayers, not Cards for Kids, but. And the last thing to just sort of note is we've kind of been yo-yoing in our total materials loan. So this, this kind of shows adult teen and youth materials are the top three sections and the bottom is total materials loan. That includes physical materials as well as electronic. And we are not seeing a consistent trend line in that. So we kind of bounce up and down, but never, never much below 700,000 items loan, which is really impressive. Those were the notable trends I just wanted to point out. Do you have any questions about the IPLAR?
Thank you. It's very clear.
Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 Illinois Public Library Annual Report as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Nora? So for this one, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. I hear no opposition. Motion passes. Thank you, Kelly.
Sure.
So the next item on our agenda is the Salary Benchmarking Report. For that, we will need a motion to go into closed session. We need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there a second? Okay. We need a roll call to go into closed session, I believe. So we can have a roll call, Jennifer?
Ms. Krishnam?
Yes.
Mr. Bobinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu. I'm sorry.
Okay, the general session is reopened at 9:40 PM. There's no motions to pass from the closed session. The next item on the agenda is agenda building. The Climate Action Plan Committee recap is on for the next meeting. Is there anything anyone would like to ask be added to?
We'll also have the updated, the new updated FOIA policy with the current wording.
Right. We have, we need into the closed session again for the discussion of the benchmarking.
Yes.
Anything else, anyone? You'll give us a little bit of recap of July 4th?
I mean, we are not participating?
Oh, just in general.
So sure, absolutely. I know the numbers are sparse. So, yeah.
I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting then at 9:41.